Ashton, a friend of mine and friend of all of all of all of us, I'd just like to have a moment of silence for her, please. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Needle, ski take roll call for the record, please.
Commissioner Barco. Commissioner Whittaker.
Here.
Commissioner Goyerso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
Elizabeth Catania.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. At this moment, I will take citizen comments via our our calling number. Our number to call in is five seven one seven four eight four zero two one. Again, the phone number is five seven one seven four eight four zero two one. The code to enter is nine zero eight zero four one six seven pound. Again, the code is nine zero eight zero four one six seven one pound. To unmute your phone, please dial star six. After muting your phone, please state your name, your address, and then begin your comment. You'll be given two minutes to speak and be placed back on mute after your comment. So at this moment, I will give it a minute to see if anybody would like to call in. We'll give it another, we'll give it another thirty seconds and then we'll start our meeting. All right, let the record show there were no calls for tonight's meeting. One brief announcement, we met in executive session last week to discuss various litigation and personnel matters. Now with that said, I'd like to start our meeting. Can I have the approval of the minutes with December sixteenth, twenty twenty Board of Commissioners' regular meeting?
No move. Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. Can I have someone from the board consider a motion acknowledging the extension granted by Larry Jackson granting the township additional time to act on his reverse subdivision plan application?
No move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. Item number eight, have someone from the board consider a motion acknowledging the extension granted by Paul Puka on behalf of his client granting the township additional time to act on his request for a zoning map amendment.
So move. Second.
So motion in a second, any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. Item number nine, have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing escrow funds be released for sixteen oh seven Summers Lane.
No move.
Sorry, is a motion in a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
That's resolution twenty twenty one dash one.
Item number ten on our agenda, can I have a member of the board consider a motion authorizing the township solicitor to advertise a hearing to be held on Thursday, February eleventh, twenty twenty at seven PM to solicit public comment on a proposed ordinance amending chapter five oh five subdivision land development, section thirty one, recreation and open space, dedication of fee in lieu of of the Upper Chichester Township Code of ordinances.
No move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. Item number eleven, have a member of the board consider a motion authorizing a township solicitor to advertise an ordinance amending chapter five oh five subdivision land development, section three oh one, recreation and open space, dedication of fee in lieu of of the Upper Chichester Township Code of ordinances.
So move.
But it it is section thirty one, not three oh one.
You're correct, Mr. Neary, it is section thirty one. So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. Item number twelve on our agenda, have a member of the board consider a motion appointing Andrew Barknick to the Upper Chichester Township Recreation Board.
No move.
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. Thank you. At this moment, for items number thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen, will be read by our vice chairman, Commissioner Joe Barco.
Thank you. Consider a motion adopting, consider a motion adopting and submitting to the Department of Environmental Protection, the updated Act five thirty seven plan for the sole purpose of addressing the PA Department, the date, Act five thirty seven requirements for the public to private waste water disposal system transfer of the Delcor system to Aqua County Waste Water Program.
Second.
So motion in a second, are there any comments for the item number fourteen, thirteen? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
That's resolution twenty twenty one dash two.
Next one, consider a motion authorizing solicitor to advertise an ordinance amending chapter five five five, vehicles and traffic, article nine, traffic signal specifications of the Upper Chichester Township Code of Ordinances.
Second. Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
Consider a motion reappointing Charles Lewis to the Upper Chichester Township Planning Commission.
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. At this moment, for items number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, we will have Commissioner Nicole Whittaker read through them.
All right, good evening, thank you. Good evening, everyone, thank you. Consider a motion authorizing Rose Valley Appraisal Associates to complete an appraisal of the parcel known as Kingsman Park Hall's not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Second.
So motion in a second, are there any comments on this one? No comments, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
Thank you. Consider a motion reappointing, consider a motion reappointing Wayne Martin to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Health.
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
Consider a motion appointing Derek Alston to the Southern Delaware County Authority.
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Whittaker. At this moment, for items nineteen through twenty-three, we will have Commissioner Joe Neary read through.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consider a motion authorizing the township solicitor to advertise an ordinance amending chapter five twenty-three taxation, article seven, certifications and duplicates of the Upper Chichester Township Code of Ordinances.
Second.
So motion in a second, are there any comments for this motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
Consider a motion, I'm going to change this one because I'm going to drop the word treasurer out of it because the treasurer is no longer the treasurer and tax collector, if that's acceptable. But consider a motion authorizing the township solicitor to advertise an ordinance amending chapter one oh five salaries and compensation of article two, tax collector of the upper township, Upper Chichester Township Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Right, is a motion in a second. There's, Mr. Pierce, there's, I don't see any problem with removing treasurer, correct?
I do not. That that's just the way it was written on the original ordinance. That's fine because the treasurer, I do understand that. So they just, it would just never change from the headline, but that's fine.
Right. Okay. So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
Consider a resolution updating the signers on the TD Bank real estate tax account.
So move.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
You want to weigh in with the number, George?
George, you want to give the resolution number?
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty one.
Oh, sorry.
Twenty twenty one dash three.
That's what I thought, okay. Consider a resolution setting the twenty twenty one wages for non-union employees. So move.
Second.
The motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
Resolution twenty twenty one dash four.
Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise for the position of municipal finance director. So move.
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any, any opposed?
No.
Uh, motion is carried, motion is carried four to one. That, uh, thank you, Commissioner Neary, we will double back to you shortly. The next two items, twenty four and twenty five on our agenda will be read by Commissioner Ed Rakowski.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I move, I move, consider a motion appointing Pamela Adrian to the Upper Chichester Township Zone and Hearing Board.
So move.
Second. The motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
I move to appoint Josie Scholl to the Upper Chichester Township Planning Commission.
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. For items twenty-six and twenty-seven, we'll revert back to Commissioner Joe Neary to read through.
Thank you, sir. Consider a motion reappointing Michael Schirmek to the Southern Delaware County Authority. So move.
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of five hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. At this moment, we'll move on to our commissioners' and professional reports. I'd like to start off with our township solicitor, Mr. Michael Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. Copy of my written report is on file with the township. I will indicate that all of the action items that were needed for tonight, for my purposes, have been taken care of through the regular commissioners' portion of the meeting. Several items of note, we have had, I would say probably thirty or more tax assessment appeals that we continue to monitor on behalf of Upper Chichester Township. Some of those were initiated by the school district, others by individual landowners and tax, uh, uh, individual landowners. So we will continue to monitor those. We've entered our appearance on all of those matters and will report back to the board as those things come closer to resolution. We have, in addition, as you know, at the next zoning hearing board, which I believe is scheduled in February of twenty twenty-one, I understand currently the matter for thirty-three hundred Market Street that I intervened on on behalf of the township is scheduled for hearing. I do not know whether that will be continued. At this point in time, it may be, but I don't have any definitive answers on that. Other than that, all other matters are routine in nature and all things are in order, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any comments for our solicitor from the board?
I have one. Mr. Pierce.
Yes, sir.
Have we, uh, have we gotten any comment back here from PennDOT for the Jake breaks on?
We have not. That is actually up my follow-up again for next week to make sure that they have everything they need. I don't know, some of the, I I've heard back actually from several other municipalities that they have not responded to things that have been filed there. So I want to confirm that we have an individual and that the things that were filed are done appropriately and that we get some kind of a response shortly, but I will follow up on that again.
Okay, thank you. There's no other comments or questions for our solicitor? Does anybody else have anything? All right, if not, we'll move on to our township engineer, Mrs. Lisa Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I do have a copy of my written report. It is available for anyone who'd like to review it. Just a couple updates. There is a escrow release for ProbCo Pineville. I believe that will be done under new business. That's the second release for for that project. They are moving forward. We've got the stormwater systems in at this point. They were working today out on Gibbons Park area. Don't exactly know what they were doing other than doing some grading. So I think they're prepping that area for for some, um, paver's work that needs to be completed there. The, the, um, Kate's Glen, we have two more loads of soil to be removed, the silt that was removed and had to be dewatered from the basin. So that project should be completed for for the meeting next month. We have the basin at Bergdahl Park that was completed yesterday. They put the orifice in, so we'll have a final closeout for that project for you next month. We did have some good news today where we received the permit for the Chichester Avenue Streets Gate project. We are in process of putting together a pre-con. We have to have a pre-construction meeting with PennDOT. We have to give them two weeks' notice in order to do that pre-construction meeting. We have advised the Office of Housing Community Development that we've received that that permit, which would allow us to proceed forward with that project. Otherwise, I can tell you, I am still waiting for an answer for the Willbrook Clubhouse, the issues with the hydrant, and I've asked that they move the fences so that there is no issue with people egressing the building should there be an emergency. Otherwise, general progress and all of the other items have already been taken care of as part of the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our township engineer? All right, let the record show there's no questions. At this moment, we'll move on to our township manager, Mr. George Needles.
I gave my oral report last week and all reports are on file in the township administrative offices. Thank you.
Any questions for our township manager? Now we'll move on to our commissioners' report and we'll start off with the vice chairman, Commissioner Joe Barco.
Thank you. Um, last week I spoke about the, uh, claims of damage territory, nothing new to update there. Spoke about the, uh, trash rations evaluations and nothing there either. Just want to add that the, um, highway department had a chance to pick up a generator from, George, I can't remember what town it was.
It's good to meet the Chichester County.
Yeah. No, but it don't matter. Someone had a generator there, given away, and our highway guys asked to go get it and use it as the backup up uptop for their buildings and that'll free up the generator down here to do more. And I think if we have a problem after this is all said and done, we'll just, we'll be able to go full tilt in every building around here now. I mean, we got the generator for nothing. It's going to cost us a little bit to hook it up and switch this over, but it's going to be well worth it. So I have any questions for me?
So any questions for Commissioner Barco? And if not, we'll move on to Commissioner Nicole Whittaker.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, I did provide my reports last week. I will just have a couple follow-ups to check the website, check the Facebook page for updated recreation hours that are open to the public, and that would be at the Field House. I did meet with the library and the consultants, and I did remind them that we need to schedule a meeting to discuss the specifics that need to go into the resolution for the library at Kingsman Road. Thank the board for agreeing to have the survey completed. I think that's, that's something that we would need anyway as a part of the resolution. So I'm glad that we were able to approve that, um, that, um, that expense. They are applying for the R cap. They're attempting to apply for the R cap grant. They are in the process of compiling, um, in-kind, gifts in-kind, so it's a matching grant. So the goal is a million dollars. So if they can get a million dollars of in-kind, um, letters of support, then that would be a huge part of the application. They're also reaching out to state reps and our senator for letters of support as well. A couple of things that they are in need of, I'm mentioning this, you know, at our public meeting, attorney, I guess to go over documentation, engineer, I know Lisa sent you an email. I'm assuming that you know what they're referring to as far as something that was done back in twenty nineteen. I'm not sure, but we can, we can discuss that offline. So again, so my question would be for the board, and then Mr. Pierce is here, if there are certain things that normally, a normal project, they would have a, have an attorney there, and that attorney obviously would charge hourly rates, review documentation, as well as the engineer going over plans and things of that nature. Is that a conflict for the township solicitor and or township engineer to be participating as an in-kind gift, their services to the library?
It depends to what extent that we are going to be involved in the whole project. I can't really give you a definitive answer right now. If they are doing it all independently, I would say no. If, however, the township is either providing the financing or doing a number of different things, it may potentially in the future, but I would at least move forward at this stage of the game. If there does arise, if a conflict does arise, I would advise the board at that point in time.
Okay, okay. All right, that sounds good. Um, so that's where we are with the library. George, I'll be reaching out to you to schedule a follow-up meeting so that we can get to work on that, some specifics, you know, regarding what we discussed about the resolution. Um, a couple other things. One other thing is that Heart and Soul, they are, again, I mentioned that last week, we want to make sure that you are reviewing the documentation submitted.
What's your?
Submitted so that, um, you know, the goals, the seven, you know, the the seven value statements, they've been verified, they've gone, they've gone over them. They're also in the process of doing, they're doing newsletters. So they want to feature a commissioner in each of their monthly newsletters. So send an email to Barb if you have a person of the month that you would like to be featured in, let her know so that she can schedule time to, you know, have you interviewed for the newsletter. I think Mr. Neary is up first on the list from, um, from what we've discussed. I think you're first on the list for, um, for the newsletter. So they'll be in touch with you about that. The only other thing that I want to say is regarding the sewer authority. Okay, so we had two appointments this evening. Um, I think that it's very important for us to, you don't have, obviously, we appoint people here, appoint our representatives from each ward to the, to the sewer authority. It would be ideal if they were in touch with us or their representatives to let us kind of know, bring us, keep us up to speed on what's happening. There's been a lot over the past couple of years with the Delcor and Aqua purchase. Not sure where that is or where it's going. I know that there have been, you know, some different recommendations by the PUC. I think it's important for us to, you know, reach out and stay connected so that we know what's going on. One of the, um, one of the major sticking points of the PUC decision was that the agreement does not specify that there is going to in fact be a trust. That was one of the big selling points is that there want to be a trust of money set aside to help with future costs of residents to offset the costs. That is not confirmed, right? So for the last two years, our sewer authority has not implemented a rate increase. And they are really operating at a deficit, meaning paying more for their services than what we as residents are paying. So, you know, I talked with my rep at the time, and I, you know, said five dollars, ten dollars, twenty dollars. I think that we should be making small increases yearly so that they're not big, you know, hundred dollar increase one year or or more, because we don't know what the future is going to look like. So I just wanted to put that out there publicly to let, you know, when, when the rates increase, public is going to come to whoever the commissioner is, why is this happening? This is going to come back to us as another, you know, expense, just like we get hit with, why are my taxes so high? And we're like, we haven't raised your taxes in ten years. That's the school board, you know? So we have to, we have that battle. We have to distinguish and explain to them where these costs are coming from. I just wanted to, you know, just put that out there and hopefully they will, you know, make small increases this year when they, when they pass the budget. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Whittaker. Are there any comments for Commissioner Whittaker at this moment? All right, if not, we'll move on to Commissioner Ed Rakowski.
Thank you. Mine will be a little shorter than that one for once. All the reports are on file. Nicole, Mr. Neary, George has a copy of the fire motion report and the medical report, the year-end report. On that note, I want, as I stated last week, I want to give kudos out to the fire department, even though this is January fourteenth, December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, they were out in that storm. I mentioned that last week. And we got hit on the western part of Pennsylvania, Florida County here, and they were out for a good three, four hours on Christmas Eve. I want to thank, thank them for their job they did, not just in Upper Chi, but surrounding towns that they were calling into also. We, as I stated last week, we kicked off our Brooklyn Town Center, Center with the committee. There is a short summary for the commissioners in their packet, Nicole and Joe. George has that copy also. We'll have a bigger report for February from the planner. She worked on that as we spoke. Basically, it was a kickoff with an introduction, which I mentioned last week, of introducing all the members. Basically, it was a kickoff with the introduction, which I mentioned last week, of introducing all the members, residents, businesses that are involved with this, uh. It was a very productive, uh, they expressed their goals, expectations of the town center. Um, just trying to get a scope together, existing conditions, everything, uh, public engagement. They do plan on five to seven meetings, open house for the community, uh, planning commission, the board of commissioners. Uh, hopefully we'll be pretty well transparent with the community and the board of commissioners. Um, everybody, on some of the feedbacks we got back from, from the committee, they were excited on all the different opinions, so hopefully, uh, or not hopefully, I'll have a, a, a bigger report for February's meeting uh, in your package that we, we would be getting from the planner. Uh, it's just a summary of what we did uh, Monday night. So our next meeting for the task force is, and it should be in the next one, is probably in April. Not that Barb, myself and the planner and anybody else is going to be communicating, we will be communicating beforehand, but in getting things together from the county and everybody else. So the next task force meeting is going to be probably in April. Other than that, went pretty well, so if anybody has any question, go ahead.
Any questions for Commissioner Rakowski from the board?
Yes, what's the name of the planning company?
Uh, C H, C A planning.
C H planning.
Yeah, C H planning.
Okay.
I don't have that folder on me right this second, yes.
They're, they're, they're helping out with the Lynwood Heights? I mean, with the Boothman Town Center?
They're the ones that won the bid for the C H planning.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, any other questions for Commissioner Rakowski? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you Mr. President, uh, good evening everybody. Uh, the financial reports are available in the office as well as the police report and uh, the tax collector update, and actually, I'm really impressed with this update, I, I appreciate uh, the agency and the tax collector putting it together because it gives us a better idea of how much money is out on the street owed year to year. Um, and uh, the only other thing is, uh, Mike Pierce, I sent you an email earlier this week about Irwin Road. Um, they want to put no parking at one side, and I don't know if you had time to review it, I just want to have all the steps in order because one time we put up signs without an ordinance and a neighbor went out and dug out one of the signs, so I want to have some uh, backup to doing.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I must have missed that, I will gladly take a look at that, but yes, it would have to be done by ordinance if you're going to make it one side, uh, parking only on one side, yes.
Okay, I just want the, the procedure so that we know we're doing it right by the book, so that.
Absolutely, not a problem.
So, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any questions for Commissioner Neary? If not, we'll wrap up with my report, um, as, as we voted on uh, tonight, there's uh, extensions for Bellevue Terrace and um, Bizano at the tonight, um, so I like, I appreciate the board uh, voting on those uh, extensions. Fifty-four ten Chastester Avenue, I believe that's going before the planning board this month, and we need, we're going to need to act in February for that, so hopefully we'll get a recommendation from them. Um, sixty-five Cherry Road, I believe Commissioner Baco touched briefly on that, that's a sketch plan review, that's going to happen this month also. Um, I don't have anything really else to touch on tonight, except to the fact that I brought up last week about reviewing the Sado plan, the county Sado plan with the planning board. Um, I would like to spearhead that project. I would like also to have our council professionals, Catania Engineering and Brian Savell, um, Planning and Design Company to do a cursory review of this, of the county Sado. Um, hand a proposal to our planning board for them to review, so to give them a basis, uh, give them a basis to work from. Now, I spoke with my representative, Mr. Fisher, um, about this. Um, he seems to be on board with it and thinks it's a good idea um, to have our, have our professionals help out with this. Um, I think it's going to benefit us as, as a township. Our Sado ordinance has not been reviewed or updated in quite some time, and if we can make it user-friendly, uh, I would like to proceed um, in this direction, so again, if, if there's no objections from the board, I, I would like to spearhead the project. Alright, um, any questions for me? No? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to new business.
I have some. Um, as we all know this board that uh, Somerset has had a drainage issue going on for probably seven or eight years that we've uh, been trying to work with them on, they finally got a uh, plan to submit. So I'm going to ask that we could waive grading permit and professional fees for the review of the application.
What is that?
Yes.
I'm, I'm asking for a waiver for the grading permit and professional fees for review of the application.
Whose application is it?
Somerset's.
The development?
Yes, the, 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 we've been doing that for seven or eight years back there, we've been going back and forth.
Yeah, the, the HOX submitted a gr- grading permit for review. Um, so the ask is uh, I believe Commissioner Baco, you'd like to make a motion to, to waive the grading permit fee and any professional fees associated with the review of that grading permit.
What, what kind, I'll, I'll second it for a period of discussion, but uh, what kind of fee are we talking about? Any idea, George?
Yeah, you're probably all in on the uh, fifteen hundred to two thousand.
How much?
Probably fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, depending on the depth of the review.
Oh, okay, I thought you said fifteen thousand. The trains, the trains going by, I can't hear.
Now, are they doing it? Is Somerset contracting this out or how is this working?
Well, us, the developer behind him, have, have all tried to work with them. Um, the developers finally want to get started over in Aston, I think. We've been going back and forth with them, George, about seven, eight years over this. I mean, Mr. Pierce has been working on this, with them, I've tried to come back, and uh, yeah, they're, they're looking for help when they go to do it between us, the, the developer over there or whoever, but um, they can't do nothing without, you know, submitting.
Yeah, we, we definitely need a review of the uh, the application, and it was done by a professional engineering firm. One Falcon Engineering.
So then my question would be, if we waive these fees, what additional fees are coming next? Or is this something they need to get started? Why are they asking for a waiver, or are you asking for the waiver for them? What, what is it?
Well, they've been asking for day one, they're looking for, they, they're under the impression that it's been done wrong, whatever. We went back and forth, I mean, there's a long list. I mean, they get flooded out there, bad. I mean, it's, it's been an issue for a while. Uh, the developer is supposed to do work when he starts the job, but I'm, I'm, I think they're going to ask us for some more down the road, sure. They're all taxpayers and, you know, it's, it's, it's a stormwater issue.
Right, so they think that, they think that our engineer, or what do they think, what do they think the responsibility is on the township? Not engineer, not Lisa, you Lisa, if I'm saying.
I, I, I can speak to that a little bit, you know?
I can, Mike, I didn't want to say that.
Sure, sure, I, okay, so we've been, we've, as Commissioner Baco indicated, we've been, we've been back and forth with them, you know, their, their original go-to was they wanted the township to fix it. We have disavowed them of that belief that that is going to happen. We did however, probably a year ago, at least commit to uh, being able, being a resource to them and being able to provide them some guidance and some professional assistance as we could. Um, we have made it and, and they are represented by now, I think they're, they're third or fourth or fifth attorney, so each time a new attorney gets involved in it, I, you know, I go over the history of it with them, uh, so that they understand and that they need to understand the township is just not accepting this and saying, okay, we're going to pay for it because uh, there are, there are many issues associated with that. But I think that this board had committed uh, to at least uh, try and, and commit some funds to get this off the dime and to alleviate the problems over there. This is the first step that they need to get their plans reviewed to see if there's going to be adequate, because what's been happening or what has happened at least in the past is that they have, e- e- everything they try and do is like a Band-Aid and it, and it's not going to solve the problem. So I think what we're trying to do is to get into a situation where we can get a solu- a workable solution. Uh, they know that they have to be financially committed to it, we've made that perfectly clear to them. So, but this is at least the first stage to find out how big the elephant in the room really is. That's the easiest way I can put it.
I think there's a little bit more of a.
Right now, they just need somebody to read through the plan, right?
There's, there's two things that are happening currently. The first thing is that Springbrook, which is the development in Aston Township, has a grading uh, permit application in currently to extend the stormwater outfall to uh, the current outfall beyond Somerset. So it will go, it will tie into Somerset's existing pipes. There'll be an extension or actually a, a second pipe installed to convey the water past Somerset Lane or Jefferson Street, I think we're calling Somerset Lane any, now, to the end wall. So that's, that's the first project, that's been reviewed. We've asked for uh, certain copies of easements with, with Somerset, just for record, as part of the proposal, it's already been reviewed by Aston Township, um, Panini Associates did that review as part of the development. So, the stormwater calculations are in line. The, the second project is a Somerset project. They've hired Falcon engineers to do that project. Uh, there is a, a plan, I did a cursory review probably four months ago now. Um, and at this point, it sounds as if they, they've now submitted the plan, I haven't seen it yet. I, quite frankly, I know that there's a lot of challenges there. The prop, the buildings are only fifteen feet away from the, from the, the uh, property line between Springbrook and Somerset. So, there's not much room to work and, and I know as well that the, speaking to Falcon Engineering, this is not going to totally alleviate the problem. It will certainly um, reduce the issues that they have there, but it, it in all likelihood is not going to el- eliminate it. Okay, thank you.
That application came in at four o'clock today.
So, you're saying that their stormwater is coming through Somerset, am I correct?
That is correct. The low point, the low point has always been right at the um, well, I don't, I don't want to say the middle of, of Somerset, but more or less the middle of, of Somerset, so you're going past the, the church and probably the thirds, third, um, no, the second row of homes is where that low point always has been, including that in Aston Township.
And, and we, we, we have gone over, you know, I know Lisa has done site surveys there and they have done different things. We as a township have pointed out that it's not just the stormwater issue from Springbrook. They have a multitude of other issues that they need to enforce stormwater management in their community itself, and they have been reluctant to do that uh, uh, for a variety of reasons. But we have pointed out that, look, we can go through and you can have all the greatest stormwater uh, management in the world, but if you do not maintain the systems and do not maintain the regulations associated with that, we're going to be back here in five to ten years, and I think what Commissioner Baco is trying to do is to get them once and for all off the dime and out of, a, a, out of a, a, a constant finger pointing at the township, because the township's not really involved in it, but we're trying to help them through this process to get that done. Is that, is that a fair assessment, Commissioner Baco?
Yes, yes.
So my question then would be, what, what is that other contractor doing to help Somerset? I understand, I mean, I have no problem with reviewing these plans, I mean, they need to be reviewed to make sure it works, but they want to get moving on that, but they're coming into Somerset, and I understand what Mr. Pierce just said, there's some issues on their own stormwater, but this has been going on for years, and I have no problem with it, but they got it, what are they doing to help them too at the same time, to help both sides? Are they doing anything?
Part of the complicating factor is that Somerset had already negotiated uh, a stormwater easement with that developer before a lot of this, shall we say, hit the fan. Um, so, they, as I understand it, have some at least oral agreements with that developer to help alleviate some of the problems. Because the developer needed an easement through their property. We were not involved in that negotiation, we were not, I, I, I'm not even going to tell you what I think about how that went or didn't go, because I was not privy to that, but they took some of their leverage and uh, uh, parlayed it into what they believe is, is an acceptable agreement to them.
At, at this time, do we need, do we need to approve the waiver just for the grading permit? I'm just a review of the plans to make sure they're on the right track.
They need all this to get them so they can get, cost the words going to cost and get moving forward.
That is correct, it would be appropriate to do the waiver and the uh, uh, and the uh, the waiver of the fees and the, and the permit application fee.
So this is the only, this, this will be the only waiver that they will be asking for throughout the project, correct?
At the present time, we have no idea what they may or may not need in the future, but that's what they're asking for at the present time.
Yeah, nothing can proceed forward without a grading permit being issued, uh, being, the plan being reviewed and a grading permit being issued.
Thank.
That is correct.
Well, I'll be willing to do it this time, but if it's something that they, that they're going to continue to come back, I, you know.
Well, you, you will certainly be able to, and, and they've been told that there is no guarantees about this, it's going to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, so.
Yeah, and that.
And just for future references, if there's other developments that are experiencing this, and I think whatever waiver that we set, whatever cost that we waiver he, that we waived here, and if we do in the future, that there's a cap limit.
Well, that, yeah, this is a, this is a, th- this doesn't set any precedent value for anybody else that would come in requesting the waivers. This is, this is a, I characterize this as a unique situation.
Alright, well, that's what I'm worried about, but.
Yep.
But I will support, but I'll, but I'll support Commissioner Baco on, on this one uh, instance.
Yeah, well, I'll put in an emotion, I move to grant the uh, waiver for the grading permit.
There's already a motion.
Already motion in the second.
It was, yeah, we have a motion in a second, so, all favor? Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it and motion is carried, thank you.
The other item that we have is uh, we need to consider a resolution releasing escrow to Provco Pine Grove Boothman LLC. Escrow release request number two in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy cents from their letter of credit.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Did we ever get?
Motion in the second.
Did we ever get? Red sheet. Red sheet?
Uh, this, uh, I have, yes, it's verified by Lisa, updated.
Mr. Neary, I'll send, I'll send a copy of that initial one over to you.
Okay, whatever. Damn accountants.
Alright, so, uh.
Was there a motion on that one?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a motion in a second, correct?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
That's Resolution twenty-two-one dash five.
Alright, I think that concludes our new business, not unless anybody else has, has anything else, not unless anybody has any other comments.
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
I just wanted to, uh, just to, um, follow up on our, our, um. Moan of silence, just to send our sincere, you know, heartfelt condolences to Carol Graham. Um, and her family, um, you know, that was, um, surprising, just a tragic loss, unexpected. And, um, she was the current president of the Delaware County Association of Township Commissioners. She was also the first vice president of the Eastern Association, um, Township Commissioners, and, um. She, you know, she's been on the board as long as I have, and will both represent the second ward, um, right down the street. Um, she's a, you know. Good friend and, um, and, uh, she will be missed, will be missed. Um, her, eh, uh, I think, I believe George has, uh, shared her, um, services with the board. Uh, they'll be on Monday and Tuesday, Monday evening at the, um. Aston Community Center, and then Tuesday morning at St. Joe's, um, church. Thank you.
Should we send flowers?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take care of sending everything out.
Let's, that'd be perfect. Commissioner Whitaker, thank you for those kind words for, um, Carol Graham, Commissioner Carol Graham, um. I'm sure everybody on this board knew her and she was a personal friend, so, again, um, was a big loss. With that said, cover motion to adjourn?
Some move?
Second.
All in favor, uh, motion in a second, all in favor? Getting adjourned, thank you.
Alright, thank you, good night, everyone.